Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. The Municipal Planning Commission is conducting this meeting in person and via conference, hopefully for the last time, in accordance with the Municipal Government Act, Section 199 at this time, according to Alberta Health Public Attendance at Municipal... Oh, no, they shouldn't be. We have now got... We have now got permission to do this. Non-virtually, so. As per Wheatland County policy, 7.13, members of the public are not permitted to speak unless the commission agrees to hear from them. If the commission agrees to allow the public to speak, the Chair will call upon specific individuals at that time. Please note, this call is being recorded and will be uploaded to our website and/or social media. To eliminate background noise, please mute your phone during the meeting. Everyone has a right to be present at Municipal Planning Commission meetings. Any attendees that are considered disruptive to the progression of this meeting may be removed at the discretion of the Chair as per Municipal Government Act, Section 198. I thank you for your cooperation and your understanding, and as every... As the... All the Commissioner are here in person, we will be just asking for a show of hands as opposed to the negative vote that we usually do. So, with that, we have an agenda in front of us. Are there any changes?
None from Administration.
So, do we have... Would the Commission...
A motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Member Clauston. The... We have adopted the agenda. We have the unapproved minutes from the June 8th, 2021. Were there any omissions or corrections needed to be done?
I'll move the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Beggar. The minutes... Anybody approved of the minutes? That is approved. We will now go on to the development permit application. We start with DP 2021-032. Take it away.
Good morning. So, this application is a variance request to the rear property line for a farm building, a chicken coop. It is located in the hamlet of Namaika. If you look on page 15 of the agenda package, you'll see the parcel with the peg in it. That's the parcel in Namaika. Also on page 15 is the circulation area. It was circulated to landowners adjacent plus one. We haven't received any responses. It was not circulated to agencies, and internal staff had no concerns. On page 16, we'll see the site plan. And although it is within the hamlet of Namaika, it is a country residential parcel, 4.13 acres. The required set bath in a country residential parcel is 3.05 metres, and this chicken coop is located 0.89 metres from the rear property line on the north. If not for the variance, this would not require a development permit as it is less than 100 square feet. There are five other structures currently on-site that do not have permits, so this application includes these five additional structures. The parcel, if we look on page 17 on the aerial photo, we can see that the parcel surrounding this country residential parcel is 126-acre egg general parcel. And on page 17 and 18, you'll see a few photos of the chicken coop. The proposal meets the criteria listed in the Land Use Bylaw, Section 4.3, regarding variances as it should not have a negative impact on surrounding landowners. The bare lot which is adjacent to this application is 126 acres, allowing ample room for future development without being impacted by the proposed variance. No concerns were raised from the circulation to surrounding landowners or the regional fire chief. The conclusion and recommendation is on page 11 and 12 of the staff report of the agenda, actually. And the recommendation is that staff are recommending approval of the variance subject to conditions. The standard three response options are found on page 13. And just to note that if MPC chooses not to approve the variance, the permit will still be issued for the five other structures that do not require a variance and are considered permitted uses. And that concludes my presentation. Please let me know if you have questions.
Thank you, Suzanne. MPC's wishes?
I'll move approval as recommended with the conditions in the RFD.
Hearing none? All in favor? That is passed. We'll move on to DP 2021-110.
This application is for an accessory dwelling. On page 24, we see the location plan, and it is east of the town of Strathmore. And circulation map is on the same page, page 24. We circulated to neighbours within one mile. There were no concerns raised at the time of this report. We also circulated to agencies. The WID, they had no concerns with the proposed dwelling or septic tank placement. And to Alberta Transportation, who had not given a response to the roadside development permit application submitted by the applicant yet. So, staff are recommending, when we get to the conditions, I am recommending that a condition be added that they receive their permit from Alberta Transportation prior to commencing construction. Internal staff had no concerns. If we go to the site plan on page 25, it is a 7.9 acre... 7.91-acre country residential parcel. The primary dwelling is proposed to be 1,800 square feet plus the attached garage. And the second residence will be 800 square feet plus the attached garage. No variances have been requested. Aerial photos are on page 26 and 27. So, this aerial photo... The property was recently subdivided, as you'll see in the next photo. This munisite photo doesn't show the subdivision yet. So, if you look on here, we see this is the new property line, 7.91 acres, country residential now. So, if we go... Some considerations. The proposed application is a discretionary use listed within the CR District and meets the MDP objective offering residence and assortment of housing types. The proposed dwelling fits with the context of the area, which is primarily agricultural and residential, and no variances have been requested. So, we see on page 28 here, photo of the two residences. One is kind of a smaller version than the other of the other. On pages 19 and 20 of the agenda package, you will see staff's recommendation, which is approval of the dwelling accessory subject to conditions with one condition added. So, I would like to add condition six, which I can bring up here. The condition six, prior to construction occurring, applicant to supply documentation confirming a roadside development permit has been issued by Alberta Transportation. So, that is my recommendation. And the standard three options are found on page 22 that MPC can consider. And that concludes my presentation. Please let me know if you have questions.
Thank you. MPC's wishes?
I'll move the recommendation with the amended conditions.
Thank you, Member Link. Any discussion? All in favor? That is passed. We will move on to DP 2021-117.
This application is also for an accessory dwelling. And if we look on page 34 of the agenda, we can see that it's four miles east of Namaika. And we circulated on the same page. You can see the circulation map. We circulated to neighbours within one mile. We didn't receive any responses. Update to the report, the WID did respond. They don't have any concerns. And internal staff had no concerns. Site plan and aerial photos found on page 35 of the agenda. It's a 50-acre parcel. The primary dwelling is 1,800 square feet, and the proposed second dwelling is 1,216 square foot manufactured dwelling. No variances have been requested. On page 35 and 36, we can see some photos, aerial photos plus a photo of the proposed dwelling. And they are proposing that it will be painted and a new roof will be installed so it matches the primary residence. Found all... A photo on page 37. So, the proposed application is a discretionary use in the AG District and meets the MDP objectives offering residence and assortment of housing types. The dwelling fits in the context of the area. The parcel is 50 acres, providing plenty of space for two residences, and no variances have been requested. On pages 29 and 30 is the recommendation from staff for approval of the dwelling accessory subject to the conditions as noted. And on page 32 is MPC's standard three options. And that's everything. Thank you. Please let me know if you have questions.
Thank you very much. MPC's wishes?
Just have a question first.
Sure.
With the painting of the siding, like, is that something we're requiring? Or they just want to do that?
In the dwelling accessory section, it just says they should have some sort of architectural similarity. So, I usually tell people if the trim's the same or there's some sort of something the same. But these people wanted to paint it and put a new roof on anyway, so they decided to make it kind of match.
Okay. Because I would say, as it is, it's very complimentary. Like, okay, that's... I just wanted to make sure we weren't requiring that because the maintenance on it could be challenging as well.
With that, I would move the recommendation.
Is the question...
With the conditions noted.
Through the Chair with a question. Do we need... With something like that with a... Do we need to worry about the coding, code? When it meets code?
Certified. So, the code of the moved-on dwelling?
No, electrical and plumbing and all that.
Okay. It's not usually... When they move on any dwelling, they have to go through the safety code process. So, I don't think they check all of the electrical under... In a CSA-approved building, even though it's older. They have to do the $5,000 deposit until the exterior finishes are complete. But we don't make every building coming into the county meet current codes. I mean, even a new build, the codes are obsolete within two years, so it's kind of hard to do that.
We have a motion in front of us? Discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor? And that passes.
You feel like this is all about you?
I'll sit down now.
We will now move on to subdivision applications, and we will start with SD 21... Oh, sorry, SD 2021-011. Holy mackerel, Graham in person. Haven't seen him for a first... And then this is the last time. Probably get to see him too because I, as I understand, he's moving on to better...
We saw him like, two weeks ago.
Did we?
Yeah.
Well, I'm old.
One week ago. One week ago. One week ago, man.
He must have not had the beard or something.
He grew that in one week.
Anyways, he is moving on to bigger and better things. So, everybody's picking on me. I haven't even brought up any chickens today. You know? It's not fair. Welcome, Graham.
Thank you for the introduction. Good morning, MPC members. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Graham Allison here presenting subdivision application, SD 2021-011. Subdivide 1.7-acre parcel with 16.89-acre remainder parcel. Referring to page 42 on your agenda package, you can see the parcel located at the intersection of Range Road 254 and Township Road 242, approximately 1 kilometre west of Strathmore. Staff circulated this application internally as well as to external agencies and to landowners within a one-mile radius. No objections have been received. Applicant proposes to create a 1.7-acre parcel with a 16.89-acre remainder to facilitate the development permit application for an outdoor storage lot. Applicant obtained a temporary secondary-use business permit in 2006, which expired in 2009. And since that expiry, the Land Use Bylaw has been amended to remove secondary-use business as an allowable use. The 18.59-acre parcel was re-designated from Agricultural General to Industrial General District, February 16th, 2021. And that accommodated a recreational vehicle storage business that's existing. The applicant is proposing the recreational vehicle storage operation be located on the 16.89-acre remainder while the outdoor storage development be located on the 1.7-acre parcel so that the two operations can have separate titles. Proposed parcel and the existing parcel can both be accessed via existing approaches off Range Road 254. The existing dwelling on the remainder parcel is serviced by a private well and private septic disposal system. And the proposed 1.7-acre lot is not serviced and no servicing is proposed. Proposal generally aligns with the strategies, objectives, and policies within the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan, Regional Growth Management Strategy, Municipal Development Plan, and the Land Use Bylaw. And the proposed parcel is serviced by... Or, sorry, the remainder parcel serviced by a private well and private septic disposal system. As for the Municipal Government Act, municipal reserve will not be required on this subdivision as the proposed parcel is smaller than 0.8 hectares. That in mind, Administration is recommending... Let's go up. Is recommending Municipal Planning Commission approve the proposed subdivision application, SD 2021-011, subject to the conditions noted in the planning report. And that concludes my presentation. Feelable for any questions?
Thank you, Graham. MPC's wishes?
I've got a question.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah. I notice on there that no... It's not serviced and no servicing is proposed on the storage lot?
Yeah, that's correct. On the outdoor storage lot, there is no servicing and no structures.
Is there room for servicing on that? I'm just thinking 10, 20 years down the road when they don't want a storage lot anymore and they want to have services on there. Is there actually, in the future, if they wanted to service that, would they be able to drill a well and put a field in there?
At that... I mean, I think that that lot size could probably contain it, but that would be something that at that time, whatever, whenever they apply for development permit, then that would have to be explored. So, Chair is...
Excuse me, through the Chair. Yes. It would be able to accommodate it. Would probably, if a septic field, would probably be an advanced system because it may not accommodate a leach field, but there are technologies that would allow it. And whether a well, that would be questionable if they drill on that particular three-point sump makers if there was a site, but they could always haul in water with a cistern if it didn't have a well contained within those... That acreage.
So, I'm thinking they decide to service it, it would propel the use of the land because it would pay up on the leach.
That's correct. Or they would have to pay for the advanced waste private sewage treatment system. There are some systems that would compact into a small area.
I'll move the recommendation.
Any discussions?
Just wanted my name on my agenda, dude. No, on the minutes, dude, Amber.
All in favor? That is passed. We move on to subdivision 2021-012.
Okay, so this is subdivision application 2021-012 to subdivide two parcels measuring 6.50 acres and 6.98 acres with a 19.52-acre remainder parcel. Referring to page 50 of your agenda package, you can see that the subject parcel located the intersection of Range Road 253 and Township Road 240. Staff have circulated the application to external agencies as well as to internal departments and to adjacent landowners within a one-mile radius of the subject site. No comments or objections have been received. tentative plan is on page 51 of your MPC package. Application proposes to create two parcels from a 33.71-acre parent parcel within northeast 332325 west of the fourth. Proposed lot one is approximately 6.5 acres and is located on the northern portion of the parent parcel. Proposed lot one currently contains no structures, but is proposing constructed dwelling and servicing via private well and private septic disposal system. The proposed lot two, approximately 6.98 acres, is located on the southern portion of the subject parcel. And that proposed lot contains a dwelling serviced by an existing well and private septic disposal system. The remainder parcel contains no buildings and no servicing. The proposed and remainder lots are zoned Agricultural General District, and they comply with the Land Use Bylaw requirements for this district. The proposed parcels can be accessed off existing approaches from Range Road 254, and the remainder can be accessed with an existing approach from Township Road 240. Proposed parcel generally aligns with the strategies, objectives, and policies within the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan, Regional Growth Management Strategy, Municipal Development Plan, and Land Use Bylaw. And the proposed parcel are serviced by their own well and private septic disposal systems. As per the Municipal Government Act, municipal reserve would be required on the subdivision. An appraisal prepared by Evan Wallace-Chuck determined a per-acre value of $11,000. Please note that the number noted in the list of conditions in the report is incorrect, and staff have prepared an alternative set of conditions to note the correction. That in mind, Administration is recommending that Municipal Planning Commission approve subdivision application, SD 2021-012, subject to the alternative... Alternate conditions prepared by staff. That concludes this presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Graham.
Just a question. How many subdivisions are out of that quarter? This is hard to read.
I believe this is the fourth and fifth, so another subdivision out of this would trigger an area structure plan.
That being said, it is on a paved road in an area that we've already put a lot of country residential into. Buster those kind of developments, that's great.
Do I have any... Do I have a member that is passive? Or do I... I will...
I'll move the recommendation.
Thank you.
As with the amended conditions.
Thank you. Member Wilson? Any more discussion?
Me and Amber aren't going to let anybody else on.
Yeah, no kidding.
Hearing none?
Amber, do you want me to do it?
All in favor? And that is passed. We will move on to subdivision 2021-013.
Good morning again, MPC members. Graham Allison here presenting subdivision application, 2021-013, to subdivide an eight-acre parcel with a 62.04-acre remainder within northwest 222623 west of the fourth. Referring to page 58 of your agenda package, you can see the subject parcel is located at the intersection of Township Road 264 and Range Road 233 directly north of Rockyford. Staff have circulated the application to external agencies as well as to internal departments and to adjacent landowners within a one-mile radius of the subject land, and no objections have been received. Tentative plan on page 59 of your MPC package shows the applicant proposing to create an eight-acre parcel with a 62.04-acre remainder parcel located in northwest 222623 west of the fourth. The remainder 62.04-acre parcel is currently subject to a consolidation with three parcels totaling 8.91 acres and undeveloped internal subdivision road subject to a road closure application. Three parcels are being... Have been re-designated from Country Residential to Agricultural General District. Bylaw 2021.13 was given first reading June 1st, 2021, and second and third reading July 6th. In order to facilitate the consolidation, the proposed eight... Or, sorry. The proposed eight-acre parcel contains an existing dwelling, shop, and farm buildings. Subject parcel is serviced by municipal water and a private sewage disposal system. The proposed lot and the remainder lot can be accessed via existing approaches off Range Road 233. The proposed generally aligns with the strategies, objectives, and policies within the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan, the Municipal Development Plan, the Regional Growth Management Strategy, and the Land Use Bylaw. The proposed parcel is serviced by, again, municipal water and a private sewage or septic disposal system. Municipal reserve will not be required on the subdivision as municipal reserve was taken when the parcel was subdivided in 2009. Administration is recommending that MPC approve the proposed subdivision. Noted, that is subdivision SD 2021-013, subject to the conditions noted in the planning report. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Graham. MPC's wishes?
I'll move the recommended action. And I have one question. Condition three of the access point. That road our road? Or is that the Village of Rockyford's road? Like, whose access is he coming off of?
So, there's an access off of the Village of Rockyford Road and then one off of a county road. So, there's an access off of the Range Road onto a village road and then onto his parcel.
So, that access is already there. The county paved that a while ago. But the access into their place is further to the east than that road. Is that a county road or is that a village road? See where the access is approached?
That approach is off of a county road, and that's actually already been approved. The applicant applied for approach inspection prior to MPC.
Yeah. I know, it's strange. That's a county road in there. The village. But...
On... Through the Chair, onto the remainder.
There's no approach there. It just goes into his yard. So, yeah, it's fine. I just find it. I just find it, I know it's a standard condition, but it's there. Yeah, the bus is where the approach is, where the word approach is. Yeah. So that road goes in there and it turns into his yard. So the approach coming off of the other road, yeah, that's been in there since whenever when Moses come. I'm, I'm thinking that line is village property, but I'm not sure.
Can you pull it up on munis?
All the white there is Village of Rockyford, right?
Through the chair, I've had a few password changes, so.
Where you can eat off the radiator. Spent a lot of time cleaning that baby. Just a lot of, a lot of dishwasher to it, a lot of dirt in there.
Not even on the property line. That's not where they have, right now, they have, they approach at the end of that line of buses you see there and it turns in, like that road is in, looks like it's part of that bus yard, right? And that up into his place. So, not so much the condition, but how can we have a condition on a road that's probably belongs to the village? Yeah, well, that's existing. Yeah, it's been there for, for the county, but didn't. It better be up to standard. Yeah, well, that's not where the arrow was on the picture.
Yeah, the arrow's on.
Yeah. So that whole road going through Rockyford.
The arrow, the arrow is on the parent parcel in the picture. Like it's, it connects, yeah, it's right there.
And through the chair, that approach isn't on the 2020 air photo because it's a new
Yeah, we figured this out to MPCs?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? That passes. You have any other planning matters? Do not believe we do. Nothing in closed session? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
How do you imagine speaking?